And now, a workshop of the McAllen City Commission. All workshops are open to the public in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. These workshops allow for detailed staff presentations.
I'll call this workshop to order. Thank you all for joining us today. We have a full house here, very animated, at the City Commission Workshop.
To say the least.
To say the least. Thank you all for joining us. And we have several agenda items for discussion today at the workshop. And so it behooves us to start right at 4:00. It's actually 4:01. So, item number one, present questions to staff regarding today's regular meeting. Are there any questions to staff?
No questions.
No questions.
None.
Very well. Item number two, Parks and Recreation Department presentation.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Protam, City Commissioners, Mr. Tewill. Thank you again for inviting us today to discuss the opportunities within the Parks and Recreation Department. Basically, what we're going to do today is just go through an overview and then show you what could be the future for McAllen Parks and Rec. Today with me, I have Deputy Director of Recreation Services, Garina Jimenez, and Deputy Director of Operations, Sadi Garcia. At any time during the presentation, if you have any questions, please feel free to interject. With that said, we'll go ahead and get started. So here's the agenda today. We're going to take a look up over the department overview, parks projects, recreation programs, and then what the future of Parks and Recreation could look like. So we'll start off with the mission statement of our department. And of course, the first statement that you see there is the quality of life for our residents, and that kind of aligns with the city strategic goal, number one goal, is quality of life. Facilitate wholesome and constructive programs, provide attractive and well-maintained major parks and recreation facilities, and to promote environmental conservation, eco and cultural tourism, and socially oriented special events. So before we get started, yeah, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Sadi Garcia, who will talk about, a little bit about the Parks Operations Management and Oversight of what the Parks Division does.
Thank you. I'd like to... Thank you. I'd like to share with you some of the information that we have based on our, by the numbers. We have 101 Parks and Recreation green open spaces throughout the city, over 1,000 acres of green space. And this green space includes all areas that are maintained by the Parks and Recreation Department, whether it be through contractors or through our own groundskeeping teams. Forty-four miles of hike and bike, and that's of course adding the 10-mile expansion that we are working on in partnership with the county, foreign expansions happening in South McAllen. Fifty-three acres of nature site and campground. We are well into 75% of our campground right now, and looking forward to having that one open soon. One dog run located at Crockett and one dog park as well. Three skate parks located throughout the city, one at Crockett, one at San, excuse me, Los Escandón, and the other one located on Houston. We have three community centers, of course, Lark, Las Palmas, and Palmview. Seven athletic complexes that host softball, soccer, and baseball. Four aquatic facilities, our Boys Pool, Cascade, Municipal, and Los Encinos. Four splash pads, and we are working towards having one splash pad per district. We have one amphitheater located at Bill Shoop. Eighty athletic fields that are available throughout the city, and 12 rentable pavilions as well. Some of our park, of course, our park goal is to provide a high-quality places and spaces for visiting, recreating, and working. And we always want to champion safety, variety, biodiversity, sustainability, and accessibility. And we do that through providing areas such as our inclusive parks. So we have, in partnership with the school district, Blanca Sanchez, and we have also added the one located at Los Encinos. We're currently working on the design for one at El Rancho and one at Retama Park. Our inclusive playgrounds are a portion of it, but adding inclusive elements is also a part. Just this weekend, we opened a new ten-spin at Curtis Park, which allows people to use the playground equipment either standing, sitting, kneeling, and experiencing socialization with people of all abilities. Our park pavilion rentals are an affordable option for all gatherings, and our facility maintenance is what makes those park pavilions so welcoming to everyone who wants to come and see them. Before you, you see some of our projects that we have completed within the past year, and some in the past two years. In District One, we've had our Morris Deck, our Bill Shoop Urban Forest, which was made possible with our partnership with Keep McAllen Beautiful. We had an upgrade to the Bill Shoop Playground and swing set. We have our campground, like I had mentioned earlier, is underway, and we've also planted an urban forest at Alphodestha Park. We have also seen HVAC upgrades to our community centers at Lark and Palmview. We've had a parking lot expansion at Youth Baseball Complex and added the splash pad at Youth Baseball Complex as well. We've seen our municipal softball infield get irrigation from our nine irrigators who exist here in the city. We've added an urban forest to Summer Breeze. We've added inclusive musical instruments to Retama Park. At Las Palmas Park, we've seen a complete overhaul with an addition of a trail system. At the Benson Hike and Bike, we've added emergency call boxes, and we've upgraded the interior to the Las Palmas Community Center. We've also seen at the, in District Four, the Palmview Playground has been updated. Escandón Playground has been updated. The Los Encinos Tennis Courts have been resurfaced, and the Ramiroguera Pavilion has also seen upgrades. In District Five, we've seen Ray Lopez Slide Repairs. Our McAllen Shines Initiative at the Development Center added lighting from AEP at the Crockett Soccer Fields. And we're also working on using some of that lighting in other parks as well. In District Six, we've seen the Curtis Splash Pad that opened last summer, and Hackberry Pickleball that opened last year. And of course, we continue with our Second Street Beautification Plan in District Six. So this is kind of an overview of some of the projects that we've completed on the park side. And of course, we always do it with the intention of fulfilling our master plan, which champions things such as our athletic fields, our tennis and pickleball courts, our new parks, upgrades to playgrounds, and creating open spaces for youth practice.
So while we believe that those numbers, both the overview of our department and the amenities that we provide to the city, and of course, the different parks and numbers of available playscapes and all of the fun things, really have high impact when you hear them all at once. But when you hear those numbers, and they really do represent high impact in terms of what the city has to offer to residents and visitors, they, and they really represent our team's overall commitment throughout the city to the various offerings and programmings and services that we offer. They represent the tangible, right? The metrics that we live by to determine what our next steps are in determining what the best offerings will be to achieve our overall goal of a high quality of life for residents here in McAllen. But they also help us align with our master plan as we are in our seventh year. So we're working through those items, and some of those projects that Sadi mentioned definitely represents that feedback that has been defined in our master plan. While they, the tangible are so important, the intangible are equally, if not more, important. For the Parks and Recreation Team, as we're driving around on the weekends, doing our rounds or in the evenings and checking on facilities, it, as I imagine everyone in this room, right? You're running to an errand or your next event. You really see families coming together and playing. McAllen is playing. No matter where you go in the city on an evening or a weekend, our facilities are full, and they have people playing and enjoying themselves and staying physically active and enjoying the city. So that's truly what we strive to deliver every day. Last year alone, we were proud to host tournament organizers for over 90 tournaments, which in turn have had an economic impact of over $16 million to the city of McAllen. In addition, along with our association partners who offer various youth and adult programming, senior sporting activities such as soccer, flag football, hockey, basketball, kickball, volleyball, and softball. In total, the city of McAllen has an offering of 41 leagues, which represent 18, over 1,800 teams and 20,000 players playing in McAllen, 15 of which are adult leagues offered by our department. With our adult volleyball league alone, which we're really excited about, seeing a growth of 123% from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23, and the overall adult league program that's offered by our athletics division increasing participation by 67% from last fall to this fall alone. This play by visitors represents over $1.5 million, excuse me, million annual visitors to sports facilities alone, and an average of 224 days of play across the city, with the highest usage of one facility at 305 days. So just to kind of give you a little bit more detail about that number, our Westside Softball Complex, as you see here, has about 200, has 222 days of usage annually. Our McAllen Sports Park has 305 days of annual usage. And our McAllen Youth Baseball Complex has 190 days of annual usage. And you'll see there the number of players and spectators that come through those facilities that are managed through rentals by our athletic division and maintained by our Parks Team and our Ballfields Teams. We, I also mentioned that not only are we providing leagues and activities for programming and youth play, we also partner with 13 associations that utilize 10 city facilities on seven, seven days a week. While they all have different days of play, we do have all of our city facilities being utilized by the partners that you see on the screen and a few more, totaling those 13 associations that we partner with to offer programs to, like I said, youth and adult and seniors. So I think, you know, the theme of, I guess, our daily operations and what we do is we want to offer spaces for everyone to enjoy and to play regardless of their skill level, regardless of their ability to attend different kinds of programming. And we believe that our parks and programs really give families that safe environment, welcoming space to be active, connect, and build lasting memories. For us, you know, on a, on a more personal note in terms of our daily operations, I love getting those messages from coworkers of mine who are getting text messages from their parents who are taking advantage of our senior programming at our community centers and the fact that they used to be at home more often, and now they have their friends who they're going to lunch with. And those types of things are just really what I think speaks in terms of our department's overall goals and objectives. Through our pools, athletics, outdoor recreation, and community center divisions, we offer 418 programs with over 1,600 classes annually, including dance, sports fundamentals, opportunities to compete like fishing, or our overall tap programs such as a track program which hosts over 500 participants each summer, to senior programming like yoga, line dancing, painting, and senior softball. And what that means is that our programs really allow us to have a broad reach by serving a diverse range of residents from young children to seniors, as I mentioned, really fostering that sense of community and engagement. And really allow us to impact youth development. We believe and strive to create opportunities and programs for children that will develop creativity, teamwork, and the essential life skills that will guide them through their, their futures. The programs offered by the divisions I mentioned previously have an annual enrollment of 28,000 participants with over 289,000 meals served through our partnerships. Now, when I say 28,000 participants, that is enrollment, that is not necessarily attendance. So some of these programs are offered twice a week, where others are offered three to four times a week. So you'll see a different number in terms of when we reference attendance. One of the partnerships that does allow us to serve our community is our partnership with Amigos El Valle, which provides meals for our senior programs. We're really proud of that Senior Living Program, as I mentioned, which was successful in encouraging seniors to stay active, socially connected, and engaged in our community, even through their senior softball competitions. Oh, yes, we also produce special events. Excuse me, I didn't have the slide picture here. So while our community centers, our athletic division, offer a wide range of programs from, excuse me, special events from, say, pitch-in-and-run to mommy-daughter dances, copy and canvas, we of course also do take lead roles in the production of citywide signature special events. That includes our Golden Age Olympics, which just wrapped up. It's a two-month program with all kinds of activities for seniors to participate in. Our McAllen Independence Day Celebration, which sees a full-day event from our Main Street Parade to our fireworks show in the evening, which hosts about 25,000 attendees through the year. Then, of course, we have the McAllen Halloween Festival, which also presents one of our Marathon Series races, the Fright Night 5K. So one thing that we did three years ago was enhance the McAllen Marathon Scott Crane Run, which was, which is held every January to increase, to include a running program that includes four of the races in the lead-up to that, to offer a year-round training program for runners. To date, we're seeing over 10,000 runners and spectators for that January event, and our series races continue to grow at a pace over the last three years of about 30% each year per race. And then, of course, the McAllen Holiday Parade. In terms of the overall operation, parade route, and logistics of the event, our team is, our management team is assigned lead roles and responsibilities for the successful execution of that event, which consistently has been highly successful. And all of these events, along with the events hosted through our partnerships with other departments within the city, have really lent us the opportunity to have world-wide recognition through being designated as a World Festival and Event City for three years. And so, you know, very excited about that. And also the fact that all of those events allow us to host attendees in parks and recreation spaces and places to, you know. It's, it's amazing how just having the Fright Night 5K hosted at McAllen Nature Center continues to see new patrons who want to experience it in the daytime, not during the nighttime run. So definitely allows us to expose residents and visitors to all of the great Parks and Recreation amenities that the city has to offer through those special events.
Commissioners, any questions? Before we move on?
Great presentation.
Yeah, more? But wait, there's more. Oh, wait. I just wanted, I just wanted her to come up for air so you could ask a question if you had one.
Oh, that was it, okay.
Yeah, so looking ahead for, for the future of McAllen, our vision is one of innovation, growth, and inclusivity. And so what you're seeing here today is something that, you know, our department, as Sadi mentioned, is guided by our 10-year master plan. And that's how we move forward in, in growing the department. And so what you're seeing here is a, is a trend that we see up north in bigger cities, is where you're having one multi-hub for health witness, health, fitness, and family gathering. And so this, this also is some of the amenities that are placed in our 10-year master plan based on the community feedback that we got. And again, we're seven years into that plan, and so three more years to see if we can fulfill everything in that plan to 100% before we start a new 10-year plan. So as I go through this slide, just remember, these are concepts that, that are in our master plan and that we're proposing to see future growth here today. So the first thing that you'll see here is an eight-lane Olympic-style swimming pool cover, right? And so our, our facilities are being aged out. I think the newest facility that we have is over 30 years old. And so by building a, a competition pool here for our community, it's going to really enhance that, that level of putting us back on the map to host tournaments. And not just tournaments and sports tourism, but just for the local residents as well, right? And so this would be one of the amenities we would be proposing along with these other nine slides here. So just up in the corner, you'll see a walking trail around the complex. A multi-purpose recreational, indoor recreational facility. Synthetic multi-purpose field, a dock park, splash pad, a more inclusive, interactive splash pad than the ones we're currently building right now. An all-inclusive playground, pickleball courts, and of course, a 16-court tennis center within this complex. So we'll move along with this recreational complex. This would be the indoor recreational facility as, as Garina had mentioned. You know, we're seeing a growth in our adult leagues. And this could serve with multiple facets for, for our community, right? And so looking at about a 40,000-square-foot complex, which would house basketball and volleyball courts, that could be a rendering design of the face of the facility. So this particularly would hold about four full-size basketball courts and eight volleyball courts. This option here had about 30,000 square foot where it designated basketball courts and volleyball courts. And on the south side, had a 10,000 multi-purpose synthetic turf for strength training, conditioning, or any other type of programming that, that you could see or they, they wanted to see in this facility. Just more photos of what the facility could look like. So we really saw the need for this, again, as we are outgrowing our community centers with, with adult leagues and having youth evening programs located at those centers. And this is something that the community also wanted to see as well, so. So as you all know, we do have state-of-the-art baseball and softball complexes here within the city of McAllen. I think in order to enhance that, and again, you know, these, these fields are being used on a daily basis, on a weekly basis. And so the team came together, the future trend, or the trend right now that we're seeing within Parks and Recs in other cities is that they are converting to synthetic turf fields. And so this is a rendering that showed, that would show Westside Ball Field as synthetic turf, full from infield to outfield. But there are options where you can just do the infield itself synthetic turf and leave the outfield all natural grass. So this was a concept. And again, we, we see this facility being used Monday through Friday with adult softball leagues, tournaments on the weekends, so very highly used.
What, other than softball, what other usage are there?
We use it, well, we used to use it for kickball as well. However, with our softball league growing, we've had to identify other facilities for the kickball league.
So youth baseball as well. Tournaments are mostly youth tournaments on the weekends. So we see, we see adult leagues playing here during the weekday and then youth on the weekends.
Were you playing any flag football or seven-on-seven or?
We do. And so that mostly happens up at the...
But they're not playing it here?
No, sir.
Okay.
That's more the McAllen Sports Complex, isn't it?
Correct. At McAllen Sports Complex. And we'll get to that after the slide. So again, we're going to move up to the McAllen Youth Baseball Complex, which was opened up in 2018. This complex features a 11-baseball-slash-softball. We've used softball in the past. And then one miracle field located on the east side, north side of the complex. And again, very heavily utilized by our associations, Monday through, Monday through Thursday, and then tournaments with youth on, on the weekends. And so again, just a concept rendering showing what it could look like with all synthetic turf fields at this location. And then we'll go back to the McAllen Sports Park. So this one's right off of 29th and Three Mile. This complex here with this setup showcases about 20 fields. And so if you're looking at the, the east side or the left side, you'll see four fields up there along Buddy Owens. Those we would propose to remain synthetic turf fields because it isn't an RDF. So we would, we would remain those as, as natural grass, I'm sorry, natural grass fields. If you look at the bottom, on the south side, closer to, what is that, 33rd? You'll see four full-size, multi-purpose football soccer fields, and that's synthetic turf. And then if you go to the right side of the photo, on the south side of the sports park, we have about 15 soccer fields there, synthetic turf. And so that's, that's what it could look like, right? This is heavily used Monday through, I would probably say Sunday. Monday through Friday, we have our associations out there, one league on Friday night. And then we do have a league out there on a Saturday and possibly Sunday at times, and so. So yeah, so it looks great aesthetically, it looks, it looks pleasing. You know, again, there's pros and cons to both. Whatever side of the fence you fall on that could be for another discussion. But again, this is what, you know, the department sees as the future for McAllen to get back up there, to attract, you know, for not, again, for local residents, but also sports tourism to bring, to bring these national, international tournaments into the city of McAllen. And the last two slides I'll show you is, is something pretty unique. We do have a float studio that helps with, with building of all floats, props for the city, for citywide events. If you've never been there, you know, we, we, you know, you guys should, should take a visit at this, at this studio. It's one of a kind, you know, as being labeled as an award-winning international parade. You know, we get to, we get to see firsthand other cities, other parades. And so, you know, this standalone is a signature facility. If you've ever been to Current Studio in New Orleans for the Marty Grau, Float Studio, the Macy's Day Parade in New Jersey, they have a studio there. And then the Tournament of Roses, the Phoenix Decorating Company, also has a float studio out there. And so when we were able to host the IPA Conference, the International Festival and Events Association Conference, two years in a row, we were able to have, we were able to showcase the studio to the, the attendees that had come. And then these attendees are worldwide, right? And they come from different fairs, festivals. Very impressed of what the city of McAllen was able to do by having one of these float studios in the size of the city that, that, that we are, right? And so not only are we able, you know, to do that, but, you know, in the future, long run, partnerships with the higher institutions of learning, right? South Texas VOTech, maybe start an internship program where they can come and get hands-on experience working at our float studio, electric, electrical work. Electric, electrical work, welding, woodworking, foaming, shaping, that all happens here at the float studio. And so, tours, we're able to provide tours for the local schools to come down and see what it, what it looks like. Maybe have some mini, you know, float building workshops. So, a lot of possibilities with, with having our own standalone. And again, it's a signature facility that would stand out here for the city of McAllen.
Right now, we have it at the Foreign Trade Zone.
Correct, yes, sir. Right now, it's at the Foreign Trade Zone.
And we're looking at upgrading it somewhere else.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that, that's what it could look like, you know, other than just being a float studio and building the floats. And so, the possibilities are limitless, and there's many things that we could do. But again, it's just getting that vision to, to build us a standalone, owned facility.
In our current facility, we've built over three hundred floats, and the team that offices out of the float studio services over forty-nine events annually, with various decor, traveling to different events, as well as the floats for the McAllen Holiday Parade.
All right, I want to thank everyone here today for giving us this opportunity. Any questions or feedback?
Second bite at the apple.
Not the first time. An, any questions?
No, very, very interesting. I see firsthand the necessity for more fields, especially light ones, for practices of the kids. Sometimes, they cannot practice, or, you know, in certain times of the year, the, you know, the, the sun comes down ver- very early, so. So, the ones that are, have lights are crowded, like, super, super crowded. So, we need to start looking into, into putting more lights into other fields, so that the other teams have opportunities. And, you know, and have these kids practice and, and develop better in, in their teams and represent the city of McAllen, of course, in the tournaments a lot better, so. But, but it's, it's good, and, and the thing is that sometimes, you don't give time for, for those fields to grow the grass back, because it's super heavily, super heavily used. So, we need to, to, to help the Parks Department in, in those things, and give them the opportunity to have a better fields and better for our citizens to use.
Definitely. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor Protem, continuing with the theme of culture and recreation, the commission had asked for updates from IMS, the museum, and the Boys and Girls Club, and so, we've invited both organizations here to provide you additional updates on what's, what's going on at those institutions. So, we'll give Ann just a second to get situated.
The logo.
I'm gonna be on the current applications.
No, no, please. How's it moving?
Put it on the current applications, no?
Yeah. It's a cordial. Yeah.
Okay, twenty more seconds. Then we're gonna go without it.
Yeah, but the video, it's, the video is, does it have the video? But those are folders, is it further down?
See, I told you, twenty more seconds.
Good afternoon, and, and thank you for this opportunity to share a recent update on our campaign for children project. IMS was founded fifty-eight years ago by women in McAllen who recognized the need for a cultural asset that would educate children and families, and improve the quality of life in our community. Prior to two thousand, the museum grew as the city of McAllen did. We now no longer have enough space to serve our growing community, and in fact, we have to turn away school groups because we have, we don't have enough physical space in the museum to serve them. And Anastasia is now going to share a snapshot of our recent impact.
Thank you, Ann, and thank you commissioners for your time today. IMS serves an international audience, with visitors coming from nearly every state in the U.S. and continents across the world. That is a, a big part of our audience, but however, ultimately, IMS serves McAllen in the biggest way. We know forty-five percent of our visitors, year after year, are coming to us with McAllen zip codes. And this, this holds true, this past year, in, in fact, it was over twenty-six thousand visitors from the city of McAllen alone. Over half of our visitors are also school-aged children, and last year, we had over fifty-one thousand visitors just in the door. And that doesn't include another nine thousand-plus community members that were impacting on our outreach into the community through schools and other community organizations. Ninety-four percent of our audience lives within sixty miles of the museum, so IMS draws a regional audience to our area and to our great city, supporting local economic development. You may not know this, but school-aged children who engage in the arts have higher attendance, test scores, and twenty to forty-two percent more likely to attend college, according to the Texas Cultural Trust study on Texas arts. IMS is working hard to make this difference here in our great city of McAllen, with the Campaign for Children. IMS continues to also remove financial barriers of admission through free and discounted programs. Over thirteen thousand people this last year gained access to IMS resources at little to no cost, thanks to the community supporters you see on the screen here, all of whom also just enhance the support that we receive from the city. Did you know that attending just one event, one cultural event a year, per month, excuse me, can reduce the risk of depression by forty-eight percent? And we're talking about the impact that we have on individuals, not only young, but entire families and multiple generations. The targeted support of this group on the screen, our community supporters, offset admission and also membership costs, on the scale of three thousand free visits and a hundred eighty-seven families who received free admission through a supported membership. At the core of this effort is a robust group of community-minded leaders who believe in this project, the Campaign for Children, our incredible Board of Trustees, and are also our campaign committee, filled with engaged community members, and that this also includes the city of McAllen. To deliver a world-class museum for the community, the museum has three main project goals through this campaign. Our goal is first to build a better museum, that is, the museum itself, the structure, the, the building, and what it means inside this community, and what it represents for arts and culture. The second is to create exhibits, so that part of our goal is looking at the content of what we provide and what we offer, and working with the collection that is entrusted to us through, through our community. And then, finally, securing the future, but maintaining the museum through an endowment for a total project goal of thirty-five million. I'm gonna turn this back to Ann.
Hi. And I should, I should have started out with, with some introductions, but we were, we were so eager to get started and wanted to be respectful of your time. I'm Ann Fortescue, I have the pleasure and privilege of serving as IMS's executive director. To my immediate right is Anastasia Perez, our Director of Development and Marketing, and to her right is Laura Nasri Warren, who is our project architect and past IMS board president. And we'll hear from Laura just in a few minutes. I'm gonna give you a whirlwind walk through the exhibit project that is, that comprises our campaign for children. This project will transform IMS into a full-day attraction, and it'll create three central interactive galleries, the World, the Plaza, and the Studio. The World brings science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM as it's often known, to life through interactive exhibits on water, weather, and agriculture. Create, it will create a new SOS theater, and for those of you who don't know about our Science on a Sphere Theater, you are missing out an amazing, missing out on an amazing exploration of both our terrestrial planet, but also our incredible cosmos. And we want to showcase our natural history collections and the landscape artwork that we have. IMS has over fourteen thousand objects, and as Anastasia mentioned, we hold those objects in public trust. They really, they belong to the community. The Plaza is a place where families will explore traditions, community, and identity through portraits and our incredible collection of folk art, with, also with interactive exhibits that use play to teach collaboration and cooperation, skills children need to succeed in the classroom and eventually in the workplace. We built the studio to show our community how art and science come together through light, color, shape, sound, and motion. I have to say, this is the noisiest pla, noisiest location in the museum right now. It's usually filled with families of all ages exploring these five, five themes. And it also houses the museum's collection of twentieth-century contemporary artwork, which echo each of these five themes. So, it's a bringing together of the art and the science in one space. So, this is a community project, like the previous two IMS expansion projects in the past, the Bicentennial Project in nineteen seventy-six, and the Millenial Project in two thousand. We current, currently have support from forty-five donors. Most campaign gifts, on average, are about fifteen thousand dollars, and represent a groundswell of enthusiasm, but not yet the bigger dollars we need now to keep the project moving. Our next steps are completing critical architectural work, and for that, we're requesting nine thousand, nine hundred twelve thousand from the city to keep the momentum going. I'd now like to invite Laura to share her vision for making the museum a signature building on the McAllen landscape.
Honorable members of the commission, and members of the community here present, thank you for your time. The journey, or my personal journey with the museum, started shortly after I moved to the Rio Grande Valley in nineteen ninety-five. I explore and determine the health and the excitement of our community by visiting their museums. It is very evident, then, when we visit other cities, we're excited to see what their museums are doing, the presence of awe and exploration. And my children grew up coming to this museum, and before, while I was pregnant with them, I was helping the Junior League through Rotary International, helping build some of the outdoor exploration areas. So, besides now being officially the architect, our firm has donated and volunteered close to a thousand hours of service, on top of being the top sponsor, title sponsor for many years, and multiple other fundraisers. So, our, our commitment began before we were even considered as architects. It is very important to have such place open during construction. So, the design approach for this was not an easy task, but one that, due to the nature of the projects we handle, and doing a lot of work, like in airports or hospitals, came, came easier for us. The phase one proposed includes, on the main building, a total of twenty-three thousand two hundred and nine square feet. Nineteen thousand two hundred and nine square feet will be touched whether they're renovated or expanded. And then, we're trying to provide also an opportunity for the museum to make some money in addition to the sponsorships, and be able to, be able to, to attend, and being able to add a second floor for a restaurant during the day, or a bar at night. This will also maybe help provide some catering services during the multiple events that we have here at the museum. The committee, and with the help of the city, they're acquire an annexed building, or what we're considering an annexed building to the back of the building. I know that originally, this one was intended to be a children's museum. But in looking at this with Ceticoleres and Exploratorium, who are well-known exhibit designers, and as planners and architects, we determined we have a very valuable corner, and you already have an existing structure. And by having to face this appropriately, we had to provide services for the operations of the museum. So, we decided that the, the building at the back will be for operations, and thus allow a viable space for this exciting exhibits to happen, and take advantage of that amazing corner, which is one of the ones that gets the most traffic, an opportunity to showcase where we are as a community in McAllen, and show what a museum that celebrates both art and sciences are and should be. We will begin by expanding some of the parking and some, closest to the main entrance. We are creating a new entrance with a circular mode that will have a beautiful access stair to the restaurant, and also welcoming all the visitors with digital screens. We want to be able to invite and teach from the outside in. We want to be able to showcase with the latest technology and LED design, 3D imagery. And yes, this is available now worldwide, what exhibits we have going on. The building will show energy, and I learned this through our beloved Kirk Clark, who always interpreted art in the form of movement and energy. So, the panels that we have found, or we provide, or we are recommending for the renovations of the facade, is an aluminum composite, which has about a thirty-year warranty, provides insulated qualities, and will allow us to use the existing concrete panels as a substrate. So, we're not having to remove any exterior walls in order to add this. It's going to allow us to add the technology, use that space as insulation. Right now, we have solid concrete walls that absorb heat during the day, and then they exude it during the nighttime. So, it's very hard to maintain this space's cool, and we know what the weather does here in South Texas. So, it's, it's like we're working against ourselves. So, they're not, they're not ideal materials for a museum environment. This will allow us to solve that, and then be able to add some fun features to it. What used to be back of house has become now our front of the house by the expansion of Bicentennial Drive. Now, we have a lot more exposure. So, a lot of the things, like the loading dock, and where the trash is collected, is very visible from Bicentennial, and it actually becomes... where the trash is collected, is very visible from Bicentennial, and it actually becomes not very nice to see. So by doing this, now we created a new front of house, not directing people to what the new entrances are. Your existing main entrance will not be welcoming larger groups. So if you come here with your family members, and at the same time that a school or larger group is coming, now the larger group is directed to go to a separate entrance, and you're able to enjoy an immediate, almost immediate entrance to the exciting parts of whatever the museum is offering. Outdoor areas right now, which are hot islands, they were intended to showcase native plants, but when you have an area that absorbs heat and emanates at day and nighttime, it's very hard for any type of landscape there to be sustainable. So you see a lot of that planting there right now, so we're going to cover those up, and then using polycarbonate panels, which looks like glass. They are impact-proof, so if we get one of those 200-year hailstorms, these ones are going to be able to sustain that. What I love about this is it's a lot lighter, about 30% of the weight of glass, it's insulated, and it transforms regular sunlight into museum-quality light. Why aren't we using this more often?
Yeah, that looks pretty amazing.
Our group has won some innovative awards, innovation awards, and we're trying to bring everything here that will enhance the quality of life and bring the excitement into it, and being able to use walls, or exterior walls, into interior walls and adding those kind of roof structures. So that's what you see on the top there. And this kind of images, you know, of the 3D, and we saw it in China when I was Chairman of Macan Economic Development, and some of us went over there. I was able to see in some of the buildings some screens that are actually like this and make it look like it's curved, and it makes it feel like you're looking at something 3D, like a cat showing their faces or a fish about to jump out. In collaboration with National Geographic, the Smithsonian Institution, and other education entities, we can acquire videos that can be used in these type of screens, and we invite people to come in. This building is not a replica of anything else that is anywhere else in the world. It was designed specifically for the City of McAllen. The building will emulate movement, celebrate energy, and invite people to come in from the outside in. And hopefully, you see that as well, and we hope we can count on your support. The monies will go in to pay the other, not only some of the efforts that are done into our firm, but to be able to bring acquisitions, electrical engineers, mechanical, plumbing, civil engineering, and all the landscape and all the other expert traits that we need to have to make this a success.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Very informative presentation, and we do have one more item on the workshop's agenda that we want to get to, and so, thank you for giving us the update. It's exciting to see what's happening at IMAS, and...
This is just a quick closure. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Anastasia. This is our donor wall pictured here, and it represents growing community support for this project. We actually have another donor tile to add to this wall, having just received a $50,000 contribution over the weekend, thanks to the incredible work of our Campaign for Children Committee and co-chairs Dr. John Gerling and Suzy Lee. So thank you again for the opportunity to share an update on this project and to request the city's continued support for this beloved cultural asset.
We cannot lose momentum, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think it's worth noting, Mayor Protem, the support that we have in the audience today for IMAS, board members, community members that came just to hear this workshop item, your presence is appreciated, and we know how important this is to all of you and how hard you've worked, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
And it'd be real nice if you stayed for the Boys and Girls Club so we could see everything that's going on in this great city.
Definitely.
We have so many things going on, so while you all get in here, the support for every venture that we have going from our Bowie Park or our Bowie Reservoir, getting ready for, to be a big, big asset to this city, creating revenues for this city. The development on 10th Street and Business, and the Expressway will also create more revenues for this city, and the various other ventures that are going around our cities within all our districts, all around South McAllen to North, Northeast, and Northwest McAllen. Those are all going to be very good revenue-producing forums so that we will be able to fund, not only in existing, us existing today, Advalorm and Ratepayers, but in the future to sustain all of these beautiful facilities. That's our goal.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Commission, City Management's Office. If I could just take a second, I know we have a lot of board members and supporters, so if you guys could just please stand and be recognized, and for taking a moment to be here with us, our amazing Board of Directors and our executive team, thank you so much for being here with us today. It's super exciting to hear all of the great work happening with Parks and Rec, our partners, as well as IMAS. We've written grants together, and of course, when Parks and Rec talks about the thousands of kids that they see throughout the fields, those are our little ones that we get the honor of serving collectively through all of those fields, and so we're super excited to continue that synergy. There's really, really great relationships that happen. So I do want to begin very briefly, of course, by recognizing our Bonham Committee Chair, Mr. Betum Enrique, as well as Mr. Trey Murray. Thank you so much for being here, two huge experts and advocates for a very long time for the children of McAllen. In short, of course, we have the honor of being able to serve 20,000 kids and teens, and really, what we really are looking to today is to really showcase all of the great work that we're able to do alongside City of McAllen. When we talk about quality of life, I know that that is a priority for the citizens, and we always advocate for the littlest kids, especially many that live in pockets of our community that need that voice, and so we are really excited to talk to you a little bit more about our projects. Go ahead.
Again, thank you, Commission, and city officials for being here, and my entire board that came and joined us, as well as the staff. Once again, just like what Linda said, pretty much, we wanted to share a little bit about the vision. As you know, we currently have two operating sites, being our Brand Center here in South McAllen, north of Business 83, and a Roni Center on the north side. And now, we finally were able to close on what's formerly Bonham Elementary in December of 2024, and with that, you know, we brought a vision of a beautiful facility and a beautiful area that needs a lot of care and a lot of love from our community itself, and with that, we saw a perfect opportunity to invest back in the city by having this great area being able to be occupied by another, what would be a third site for the Boys and Girls Club, but not only that, but also with the intention of bringing a sense of community center that it would be available for other purposes besides the McAllen Boys and Girls Club. So essentially, with that said, you know, we want to take the chance of expanding what our currently services are, especially in areas that need it the most, keeping our youth safe, secure, and healthy, and at the same time, being able to share with you the, kind of like, the grand vision of what this, almost 14 acres and 20,000 square foot facility, in addition to the cafeteria and the current existing gym that it's there, could be, and essentially, you know, how the city can contribute to be part of this growth, as you know, is of what was important for the impact of the entire city. So anyways, with that, I just wanted to kind of cue in Trey to help us out here.
Yes, yes, sir. It is, so we can...
Good afternoon, Commission, Mr. City Manager. It's fun to be here. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about today. Boys and Girls Club has been partnered with the city for years and years, many of you. When I joined 24 years ago, Tony was, I think, present for the second time, so we have a longstanding relationship, and we appreciate the support that the city and this commission has given us over the years. We're not quite as far along as IMAS in our latest endeavor, but as you are aware, we have purchased the Bonham property. We went through quite a bit to get to that point, but we signed in December, and so we're kind of using '25 as our next step in that process. So what does that look like? Well, we have engaged a local firm to do some conceptual, some visions for us. I don't know if we have some of the big picture there stuff. You all know where the site is, so I'm not going to go through all the demographics and everything else with you, but this is kind of a vision of the front entry, but keep scrolling through a little bit. I'd like to just get a site plan. Go back one. There you go. So Jordan Road, south side of town, east of Palmview. This is kind of what we envisioned. This is very early. We have just kind of said, we've had five or six of us talking to a local architect to help us get to this point in the process. What we need to do is serve kids. That's what the front of the facility does, and the side, the peak. What we also need to do, which is very much in alignment with the Parks and Rec presentation earlier, is serve sports. We have four gyms that the Boys and Girls Club has access to that we own, we share others with the school district. We're in drastic need of more gym space. We serve over, it was 13,000, I think, kids through youth sports in McAllen on an annual basis across all of our facilities, many of which are City of McAllen facilities, others are Boys and Girls Club facilities. Our gyms are packed, I'd say, sunup to sunrise, but the kids do go to school, and we need more space. We are booking them back-to-back, and so what does that look like? We'd like to centralize that as much as we can. I mean, we're not certainly giving up our other facilities, but we'd love to have one large facility. Parks and Rec talked about that large facility appeal, and I do think that has an appeal. We need the space, we need the practice space, but also, we need that weekend sports tourism. It's the dollars that bring in. We've proven what we can do with, working with the city and others through the Pony International Tournament the last few years, the success that it's had. We envisioned something similar with this, but for the basketball/volleyball crowd. I was in Houston this weekend. There's over 200 courts set up in the George Brown Convention Center for volleyball, and they have an afternoon wave and a morning wave, and each court services four in the morning and four in the afternoon, do the numbers. Over 500 teams are playing there. It is over 800. It's amazing, and if we can have one little piece of that here in McAllen, and people want to come to McAllen, but we don't have the facility to put them in there. That's just one idea, but that's kind of, that's where we're starting at, is the vision, is the grand vision. What does this look like? Services our kids, brings tax dollars to our communities, and allows our kids on weekend not to have to travel somewhere else and drop all those dollars in someone else's community. Round Rock, if it developed into Round Rock, is a wonderful facility at a smaller level. It's got 12 basketball courts that converge to 24 volleyball courts. That's kind of what we're envisioning here. You see Phase 3 and Phase 4. That's really Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the athletics side of this, and it's four and four, basketball, which converts to eight and eight in volleyball. The front of this, Phase 2A, Phase 2B. Phase 2A is what we envision as our bottom, our south side clubhouse. One thing that hadn't been said is the Expressway really, I mean, it's a permanent separation, but it's also a mental separation in our community. Our kids don't go back and forth. As close as the Grand Center is to the south side of McAllen, our kids from Roosevelt don't go that way. We need to service them there. So the Phase 2A is our clubhouse, that's what we envisioned for part of that. Phase 1 is what we have immediately, is a small gym, it's an elementary-sized gym that's there now. It requires minimal work to get it up to our standards so that we can begin using that to service. Phase 1, the other part of Phase 1, up more to the front, is an existing cafeterium with a stage. We envision that, kind of just more general purpose, it can function in many things. Again, our vision isn't set, but we're trying to get there. We're looking at going out this year in '25 with our capital campaign. As I said, I've been on the board for 24 years, and I came in at the tail end of our last capital campaign. It's been 25 years, quarter century, since the Boys and Girls Club has gone after money in this community, to the community as a whole. We think this is a great opportunity to do that again. This is very early on. We're giving you a heads up, wanting to know, we want you all a part of that. This is our project, we fully recognize that, but we're looking for your help to help fund this. We'll see what that looks like as we get further developed. We have some ideas, but right now, we really want to tell you all at once, this is what we envision, and that's what we hope to provide, not only to the south side of our city, but to the valley and to the state as a whole, so we can bring those tourism dollars and sports tourism dollars to the city.
Any questions?
We're spending your time. Questions?
Yeah. Any questions?
Please fire away.
No, impressive compilation in a short time. I mean, y'all are moving fast and tell how bad you want it.
For sure, absolutely, and we've already been able to leverage $3.5 million. One of the things that I've always mentioned, say Commissioner Aguirre, as well as Commissioner Quintanilla, is that the value of a nonprofit, being able to go out and raise those dollars and really leverage those city dollars, so we're about 25% to 28%, where we're actually bringing in between 75% and 80% through board fundraising, as well as other local, state, and federal dollars, including foundations, so there's a ton of synergy. It was very exciting to see the master plan for Parks and Recreation, because I believe in our partnership there. It seems like the master plan, there's just like a ton of great, you know, work that we can do together, especially in South McAllen, so I look forward to that.
Let me share something that I heard earlier in the IMAS presentation, that it was June 2nd of 1967 when they started the IMAS program. Well, right around the same time, right after elementary school, or school was, elementary school was over, it was 1967, and I was 10 years old, and I lived in South McAllen, and we used to go out to sell the paper, the monitor. My dad worked at Clark Chevrolet, and in June of 1967 is when they formed, from an old gymnasium that was there, from the high school that used to be there, and then junior high, and my dad worked at Clark Chevrolet, and Willie and I were driving the bike, and we were going towards Clark Chevrolet, and there was a family, by the Barnett family, that was welcoming kids that, right at that time, June, whatever, and welcoming kids to go to the first Boys and Girls Club in the City of McAllen. And further, so that you could see the strength of McAllen, in September of 1967, Hurricane Beulah hit us, and hit us strong, and we had immense water, immense flooding in this whole community, and very much in the south, but the whole community, this whole valley. So here they are, starting a museum same year, starting a Boys and Girls Club the same year, and going through a devastating flood-driven hurricane, Hurricane Beulah. And guess what? We didn't stop. We didn't say, "Well, we can't go through this, we can't spend any more money because we got to take care of the needs." Well, there's the 1968, and the 69, and the 2025.
That's right.
We have to exist, we have to keep going. I commend all of the volunteers that come and have done so much for through the years and continue to do that, and yes, I remember 25 years ago, a young Trey Murray, along with around another 14 or so, that we converted the Boys and Girls Club Board into a young, strong board that was going to take us to the next future and help us in fundraising and grow that second, the second Boys and Girls Club, and put money into the first Boys and Girls Club also. So hey, we can do it, and one way or another, we're going to figure it out, right? No pressure.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the passion, I appreciate it. Thank you again, Mayor Protem. I appreciate it.
One question before.
Sure. Absolutely.
We have like four minutes left until we have to turn on the next meeting, but over the next 12 to 18 months, what will you be using the facility for? What are the immediate uses of the facility at Bonham?
So the extension, so the extension's about 15 years old, and then, of course, the 18,000 square feet is the historic Bonham property, so go ahead. Sorry, 40.
40 is the whole, is the largest building, Bonham property.
40.
The half, almost half we're looking at using as the clubhouse is 19.
Okay, there you go. And actually, Trey Murray and Half Associates was part of that, so he's for sure going to know those numbers. And so, it's actually very sound, and so we're going to be able to renovate with those congressional spending dollars, and so we look forward to doing that. We should be able to welcome semester two, or possibly summer camp of next year, being able to kickstart that. We are going to have an Easter egg hunt... We are going to have an Easter egg hunt out there to begin to let the community know that we're existing. So we're very excited about that. So that would be our traditional clubhouse setting. And in keeping with being conservative and being good stewards of the city dollars, those Roosevelt dollars starting in the fall of 2026 will actually be used over there. Where we're talking with the school district, we'll be able to serve more kids and be able to use those DCMI dollars and take them over to to the Bonham property.
Does it include Brown as well?
We do, yes. So it's going to be all that space right there. Absolutely, yes. And the beautiful thing is that we can stay open later because we do stay open later for teens in South McAllen at the Brown Center. So we'll be able to feed more kids and help more kids later on.
Great.
And for the gymnasium too. I mean, like I I talked to a lot of parents and they have all the volleyball and basketball tournaments. You know, kids from all over the valley come to those tournaments. So it's a great thing.
Too, because you're right on the Expressway.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Exactly. You don't have to go into the, it's like the Expressway. And and we parents look at those kind of things, you know, whenever, because sometimes our kids are in two different sports. You trust each other and another and that connection is very important.
For sure.
So yeah, to you guys, to the board of the Boys and Girls Club, I was a board member for many years there and I commend you guys for all that you do for our youth and that the kids are our future. And I think it's going to be great, great, great things happening.
It will. We look forward to working with you guys.
Yeah, we're looking forward to having further discussions about this project and seeing how we can partner together.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Particularly with the addition of the Parks and Rec and 40,000 square feet that I hadn't seen before. That may be something we can work very closely with.
Definitely.
Definitely.
Absolutely. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, next item. We're gonna skip executive session.
Mayor Protem, if you want to recess to executive session, it's it's a short agenda. We can do that while they break this down.
Okay, yeah, let's do it. Let's recess to executive session.
Executive session. This is the end of the workshop. Do we have any public comment? No public comment?
This concludes the workshop of the McAllen City Commission. Workshops are held every second and fourth Monday of the month, convening at 4:00 PM at the McAllen City Commission Chamber on the third floor at McAllen City Hall.